Good morning, everyone. Bob Hopekun. Hope everyone had a good fourth and safe. Everybody's got all their fingers and everything, so must have been pretty decent. Just wanted to touch base this morning on a couple of things that there was just concerns that I'm hearing and stuff from public on things. You know, the group brings up a lot of good points on ordinances and stuff and, you know, some things that, you know, some people feel need changed, some things that other people don't think need to be changed. And everybody's got their opinion and everything, which is, you know, a problem. Everybody should be entitled to their opinion and everybody should respect everybody's opinion. And that's my opinion. There were a lot of concerns about water issues and stuff, and then that leads into questions about, okay, farm ponds, are we gonna need to put fences around those later? Or somebody decides we need to do that? Or creeks and stuff like that? There's a lot of issues that pop up on the farm, so, you know, a lot of good questions, you know, people bring that up and they're... I haven't been able to find any, but supposedly there's cases all over, I suppose, if you start digging and looking and... I'm sorry, but I don't have the time to do all that. I'll dig it a little bit, but there's some places that have enacted ordinances where no farming equipment out after a certain time within so far as city limits. I know cities that we've worked in, you know, work can start till eight o'clock and it has to end by six, you know, for example? Things like that. You kind of wonder where does it end? And like I say, there's a lot of good points brought up about the safety and everything, but everybody needs to work together and figure out a solution. I've heard a lot of concerns from people and be advised, I talk to both sides. There's a lot of concerns from people that I have talked to that are not for the win, but they are concerned about how some people are going about promoting no win. They, some of them feel that, you know, just to come flat out, they feel almost threatened sometimes. They, they, they say, well, you know, we're not for it or anything, but we don't agree with some of the points that get brought up. You know, it goes back and forth between pro-win and no-win. Each one has their point. Each one has good points. Then you gotta figure out, well, which one's actually true. You read stuff on infrasound and one, one doctor says, no, it's not a problem. Another doctor says it is. Some people are affected by it different than others. One good example, there's a group that doesn't care to have fireworks and they're pushing to ban fireworks around everywhere because of the problems that they cause. They're saying it causes problems with the nature of the bees and all that, and there's studies on that and just like there's studies on everything. Back to the concerns on people, they feel, some people feel that they're a little bit threatened, like if they were to put up something, somebody come and burn down their farms.
They've been threatened like that?
Listen to what I say. They feel that, who? Okay? Okay, I'm gonna ask you that I just make my comments, okay? I'm just telling you what I heard. I'm not going against anybody, okay? I'm saying, everybody's got good points. And as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, I'm, I'm neutral on this stuff. I don't care if it goes either way. In fact, I kind of lean towards, I wish nobody would come in and try to put up anything 'cause I don't like seeing everybody arguing everything. I really don't.
Then why are you here, Bob?
I'm here because I'm just talking, I'm, I'm the bad guy because I wanna see people get along. And I'm just voicing the concerns that I've heard from people here, okay? I wanna get along with everybody and I think, I think that there's, I think that there's some people that...
Bobby, where you live?
Don't interrupt me. I've got the floor, I'll talk to you later. Everybody's had a chance to call me and talk to me afterwards and stuff.
Don't argue, don't argue, we wanna get along, Bobby.
If people get to come in and talk, I've got...
I just asked you where you live and that's all.
I don't wanna be interrupted. Building a house on the family farm and you know that, we've talked about that before.
You don't live on a family farm?
I don't live there yet. I'm working on building a house there, so I'm in between there and Benton. And you know that, we've talked about that before. This is enough. I'm just telling you about the concerns and stuff that I've heard from people and I wanna see everybody get along. It does concern me when, when people that are against wind don't particularly care for some of the things that go on all the time from both sides. We don't wanna see people arguing. I, I hate to see people feel like they're threatened, I, you know, I've asked you, well, are they threatened to burn your house down? Well, no. But I do know that there's been hate mail and stuff, and where it's coming from, who knows? That doesn't need to be. And I don't even, I don't even know that it's, you know, I'm not saying it's coming from anybody here, that could be just somebody stirring up trouble somewhere, you know? And unfortunately, there's people like that doing that. I think, really, I know most of you people and I think you're all good people. And you got your opinion and other people have theirs. And I'm not gonna sit here and argue with you. I've got people in my family that, nope, they don't wanna look at those things. I don't like where none could go on my farm, so I'm probably not, I'm not gonna do it there, 'cause I don't like how it would have to be. And, you know, as far as the, the others to the west and everything, you know, that's a project that's going. This new project that they're talking about, you know, there's probably enough people that, that don't want it, that it may not happen. Or it may...
Can I ask you a question?
No, I'm just talking, I'm talking right now.
No, that new project, what, what are you referring to?
I'm talking about Apex, the one that they're talking about.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
So, I mean, maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't. You know, other questions that come up was like, okay, we're not for wind, we're not for solar, you know, what would we be for? What could, what could work that everybody would be happy with? Yeah, you don't wanna see farm ground being taken up. Sometimes they have to on things. I talked to one of the neighbors about, it was back in the seventies or eighties, there was a deal about drilling for a while in Tama County and they were drilling samples. I said, do you remember what that was going to be? If they were going to do eminent domain, if they found something, or if the landowner got rights to it or what? And I haven't found anybody that remembers yet. There's all kinds of things that come up over the years. There's always a discussion on things. It would be real interesting to find out. I mean, we know about all these people that are for it, we know all these people that are against it. It's too bad that we could never find out out of the, the total population of adults, how many people like this and how many people don't, you know?
Another thing...
We'll never, we'll never find out because some people just don't say, you know, they won't say or they don't care or whatever. So we'll hear from a few on both sides. And these guys don't have an easy job. It's, it's just like anything else with the public. You gotta listen to both sides and hope that you make the best decision. And it's not always the decision that people want. But we need to all work together and get along. And you're not always gonna agree with me, I may not always agree with you, but we can always get along. I don't like hearing the boo and hiss out of the public and stuff. Should be a little bit respectful towards people. Don't interrupt people when they're up here talking. Nobody's interrupting, you know? Nobody should be interrupting you guys either. Everybody's entitled to their opinion and people should respect that. I've known John and Larry for years, I mean, we did stuff in high school together. They're good people. All you people are good people. Everybody's got good points. And I'll go home some next and say, well, it seems like I'm the bad guy because I wanna see everybody get along. I don't wanna be arguing with anybody, I wanna get their opinions. There are some, uh, there's all kinds of things and stuff here that I'd love to discuss with you, but, I mean, I don't get any phone calls. A lot of times we're out in the public and we don't have time to discuss it or anything. People are busy. There's always an issue. Whatever's going on, somebody's gonna be upset about it and somebody's not gonna get happy with that. That's how it is. I don't need to work together. So, all I'm asking is, you know, folks, let's not be doing this booing and hissing and stuff, let's, let's just be polite. Let's all work together. There's all kinds of things, I'd be more than happy to talk with people. I'm not gonna take up any more time, these folks have their presentation. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Bobby. Can I ask a question before the meeting release? I was, I've been wondering, and maybe these guys wanna comment on it too, but like when they sign up for this, they say they're signing up for the farm, 'cause they don't know where they're gonna put the, the wind generators or whatever at, what location? And, uh, and, you know, they put up a no trespassing sign. Well, what about, uh, like, I'm a hunter and a fisherman and there's a pond on the property, or does, does this lock up? Like no trespassing for the whole farm since the contract encompasses the whole property as, as owner? Anybody wanna say anything about that? No? Does anybody, do you know anything about it, John? The no trespassing part of it?
I do not, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
I, that might be a question for Brent. Is Brent here?
That's all I had to say.
I think Brent's on vacation.
Oh, I, I, I have a comment referring to, and we've spoke about this before. When you talk about the, the number of people in the Tama County, coming directly from someone who is a US Census taker, you figure that the adults that are eighteen and older are one-third of the count. The rest of them are considered underage. That is the average from a US Census taker.
One other thing, just to clear up, I know the other side keeps saying threatened or that we're a mob. We need to be careful with that. We're a bunch of farmers. We have on our Facebook, we have rules. We block and delete posts as they come out, you know, and stuff months ago, that was before our rules. We need to be careful there. Bob, on your comments there.
He's not listening, I see this. She's there.
What did you hear? I'm sorry, I was getting her some...
I said with the threatening thing, I know you need to be careful saying that. The other side keeps saying we're, we're threatening, we're a mob. We need to be careful, we're a bunch of foreign people, family owners. I haven't seen anything. If there's something, bring it to our attention. We put up signs in our fields and our acreages. We have rules on Facebook, we delete, we block the comments that are there.
Oh, like, like they said up there. Who knows where that stuff came from? I, I don't think that it came from, you know, certain people, but I'm saying that's, that's what people are feeling, you know? Who knows, who knows what troublemakers out there just trying to stir up and send letters and stuff?
For sure, and that's, and that's what, 'cause I have not heard of anything. So if there's something, bring it to our attention. That would be better than standing up and saying that we're threatening people, 'cause that's not what I'm...
That's how, that's how they felt.
Okay, well, somebody is, just what it's...
To ask, to ask if they've got anything, you know, specifically from them, no. If they said, that's how, that's the feeling that they're getting. And then when letters are sent, okay, they're coming from here, they're going from somebody else.
Yeah. No, we're about public safety and, and helping everyone in Tama County, so just wanted to
Good morning. I'm John Michael Black. A fourth generation Tama County crop and livestock farmer from rural Dyson.
And I'm Janet Wilson, part of a fourth generation family farming operation near Kootenay. We're here today on behalf of Tama County Against Turbines. Our coalition now includes more than 1,100 members who support the need for change to Tama County's outdated commercial wind ordinances for greater public safety. Perhaps you've also seen or heard about our coalition's new YouTube channel. If you haven't, we want to make sure that you can experience some of the educational content we share. We'll highlight some of that content today.
He left.
He went to the entrance.
You see how this works?
So, action item number one. Could you please verify that the county zoning administrator, Todd Appel, reports to you as the board supervisors? It's true, right? A little not, okay. Thank you. Do we understand that Tama County zoning administrator also serves Marshall counties as the zoning administrator, correct? Yep, okay. Does Todd Appel happen to be here today?
I don't see him.
Okay, we just still all wanna meet him. We wish he could come. Action item number two, um, I was gonna ask if the county attorney was here today, 'cause we haven't met him yet, but he's apparently on vacation, right?
I don't know where he's at.
I heard somebody say that, sorry. It would be nice if the supervisors would ask them both to attend this meeting so we can meet them.
Our coalition members have addressed you publicly each week since April twenty-fifth. Today marks eleven straight weeks in which we have made requests of you in your meetings asking you to update Tama County's outdated industrial wind ordinance and permitting process. Why do you insist on saying an outdated wind ordinance that dates back to 2010, twelve years ago, and was first part of the master zoning ordinance in nineteen ninety-eight? That's twenty-four years ago. In your words, Larry and Dan, that's fine. A lot has changed when it comes to commercial wind turbine technology in twenty-four years. And that's why Tama County's minimal ordinance needs to be strengthened through amendments to better protect public safety for everyone. The promises of big money to be made by the county or by landowners if Tama County allows any more industrial wind turbines to be built here are just words. For example, if there was so much of an economic benefit to be added to the tax base from, from industrial wind turbines, why did Gladbrook, home of the Vienna Wind Farm, have to close its school and combine with Rheinbeck in Grumby County? And why did you take what tax dollars that were supposed to go to the Gladbrook schools for yourselves as the county instead of directing them to the Gladbrook schools? You were on the supervisors' board then when that processed to create a TIF to take the money away from the Gladbrook schools and instead put it in the pocket of Tama County. Surely there was a better way to pay for gravel, which you claimed to use the money you took from Gladbrook for to use instead for the county. We expect Tama County to hold wind developers and their construction crews accountable to pay for all the damage their heavy construction equipment hauling and erecting wind turbines causes to the county roads. Taxpayers shouldn't have to pay a dime for that. Our strong, growing coalition of citizens from each of your districts throughout the county demands transparency and full accountability from you and other county officials. We're not going to let you hide behind no comment. We're not going to let you sit silent and do as you please with taxpayer dollars and to disregard public safety. After all, you work for us. So here's another action item for you. Before Tama County even considers approving any more industrial wind projects or future phases of them by developers, Tama County officials like zoning administrator Todd Appel must do their job. Will you agree that starting today, July fifth, you will require Todd Appel to start doing his job and enforcing compliance with conditional use permits and the commercial wind regulations in Tama County? Any response? Todd Appel and you as supervisors must all start doing your jobs that the taxpayers pay you to do. You can't continue to ignore public safety and the public's call for change as represented by more than eleven hundred members of our coalition. You must hold industrial wind developers accountable to following the requirements in the conditional use permits and existing wind energy conversion system ordinance. That's your job. That's Todd Appel's job. Start doing your jobs that you are paid to do. Start earning your paychecks.
We do wanna thank Tama County Attorney Brett Heron for taking an interest in ensuring that the county is enforcing conditional use permits approved for phase one of the salt creek project. Personally, I want to thank him. Last week, he graciously accepted a phone call from me, he respectfully listened and asked questions. He then professionally answered that he would look into the situation and discuss it with Todd Appel. He listened to our concerns and offered to help. That was really refreshing. That is how a county official should act in the interest of the public and public safety. For example, the county is responsible for enforcing compliance to those conditional use permits for industrial wind projects. If you, as a county, don't intend to enforce, enforce the conditional use permits or the wind energy conversion system ordinance, why do we even have those ordinances? If, if the wind developers are in charge of evaluating if they need to be taken care of or not, why does the county have an ordinance? If you don't intend to enforce the conditional use permits or the wind ordinance, here's another action item. Eliminate Tama County's commercial wind ordinance and conditional use permitting process for any new project seeking approval in any phase. Instead, going forward, do as Benton County does. Preserve the highly productive farmland. Don't allow industrial projects like industrial wind or solar to be constructed on any ground in Tama County with a corn suitability rating of seventy or higher. That is pretty simple. Preserve farmland and quality of life and property values in Tama County by prohibiting any industrial projects like industrial wind turbines from being constructed on ag ground that is better suited and intended for crop and livestock production. Citizens expect Todd Appel as Tama County zoning administrator and you as the board of supervisors to ensure and verify that industrial wind project developers and operators have complied with all the terms of conditional use permits for wind projects and the county ordinances that govern them. It is not enough to simply take a developer's word for anything, as public safety should not be risked or compromised. It's the county's responsibility to hold developers accountable for public safety and to demand proof of it and not just take their word. Here's another action item. Will you as supervisors agree to hold the wind project developers accountable for adhering to provisions in the conditional use permits granted by Tama County or any other project approval granted by the county to protect the health and safety of all the taxpayers? You can just look up, give an answer, just, thanks. Okay.
We understand Tama County modeled its minimal, outdated wind ordinances after those in Marshall County, Iowa. Larry, you've been on the board for twenty-seven years, so that means you were serving as a supervisor when the county's master zoning ordinance went into effect in nineteen ninety-eight. Is that correct? And Larry, that also means you were a supervisor when the wind ordinance was separated out from the master zoning ordinance in 2010, when little changed, other than separating it out and renaming the ordinance. Is that correct?
I'm gonna make a comment other than to say that's not exactly correct, the way it happened. Now, that's the last time I'm answering any of them.
Tama County uses the same person for zoning administrator as Marshall County. Tama County's wind ordinance is similar to Marshall County's. Let's take a closer look at what it will look and sound like in Tama County if you allow any further wind project approval or construction in Tama County. Have you ever gotten out of your vehicle and listened to what wind turbines in Marshall County sound like? Have you? Have you? You have not. If not, why haven't you actually listened to an industrial wind turbine up close? How could you adopt the provisions in Marshall County's wind ordinance without witnessing what the impact of the turbines actually sound, look, and feel like before approving the Tama County ordinances? Larry, we realize you were the only one of you three here today who served as a supervisor back in 2010, when you re-approved the wind energy conversion system ordinance. But all three of you re-approved it May sixteenth without asking a single question in your public meeting on it. May we remind you that each of you was elected to serve all of the people, not just a select few who stand to gain financially from wind projects? And who are simply concerned about themselves and their money? If you haven't, how can you say Tama County's outdated wind ordinance is, in your words, Could you please answer and let us know if any of you have ever gotten out of your vehicle and listened to an industrial wind turbine up close? We're listening and the public deserves an answer. Since you all seem to have lost your ability to speak, all you have to do is listen now. Listen to what a wind turbine sounds like under those Marshall County ordinances that Tama County also adopted, allowing sixty decibels of noise. Would you want to listen to this loud wind turbine noise every day? Would you want your family or livestock or wildlife to have to listen to that turbine noise every day? We're simply asking for you to answer simple questions. If you wouldn't want to listen to this every day or to have generations... If you wouldn't want to listen to this every day or to have generations of your family endure it, then why are you sentencing Tama County taxpayers to have to listen to this harmful noise every day for generations? Tama County's outdated wind ordinances allow so much noise to be emitted from wind turbines that some folks say our ordinances appear to have been written by wind developers themselves. Sixty decibels is far too much noise to be allowed from wind turbines. That noise can be a public hazard as it can cause hearing loss, seizures, migraines, and other negative health consequences. Both Tama County and Marshall County's commercial wind energy ordinances allow wind turbines to emit noise of up to sixty decibels. Our coalition members know that sixty decibel level is too high for public safety. An action item for you is to amend the current Tama County commercial wind ordinance to no more than forty decibels LMAX at any time. So if you're unable to speak, how about giving us a simple thumbs up if you think Tama County taxpayers should have to live with wind turbine noise at sixty decibels as the Tama County ordinances currently allow? Anybody want to give us a sign here? Please show... Yeah, well, that's pointless. Please show a thumbs up if you truly believe Tama County's outdated commercial wind ordinance is fine. You guys think it's fine? You've said that, you still stick by it.
No comment, John.
Well, Larry, you said it was fine. Do you have any comment now? That's what I thought. Dan?
You may recall, our coalition has pointed out previously that Tama County's existing wind ordinance doesn't contain any language about controlling or limiting shadow flicker. That's unacceptable. Shadow flicker can also adversely affect people, livestock, and wildlife. Shadow flicker can trigger migraine headaches, insomnia, occasionally seizures, and other adverse health effects. Have any of you guys ever been in a home or driven through shadow flicker? I'm curious, in the crowd, has anyone ever been in a home with shadow flicker? How many of you have driven through?
I've driven through it.
I just hit a van wall on the way here, like that little...
The little time...
...that goes across the highway. I was like, no way, so fun to drive in.
I drove through the big wind project on Highway twenty by early, and it is freaky to drive through. Would you want me to attempt a demonstration of shadow flicker in here? Are you interested, or have you seen videos of it?
Sure. Yeah, I think a demonstration would be good.
We can try.
Why don't you get ready to do that? I was up at Wellsburg, and we drove around that wind farm up there, and we stopped on the road with another guy. We stopped on the road, so we were, you know, proper distance away from the wind generator and got out of the pickup. And I think it's the weight, is that right, John? Would, it was, every time a blade come by, you could feel the air pressure change on your body. And that, and we were in proper distance away, you know, because we were parked on the ground. Anyway, shadow flicker.
Okay. Shadow flicker is like the lights going on and off rapidly. It's similar to how lights flicker right before power goes out. A wind turbine blade passes the low setting or low rising sun about every one to two seconds in average wind. On windy day, the turbine blades pass the sun about every second. We can tolerate it for ten minutes, but how would it be if we did it thirty hours a year in your house? Not good. Not good. When the wind ordinances like Tama County's have no requirements for limiting shadow flicker, you're subjecting people and animals to the same effect like the lights going on and off rapidly every one to two seconds. How can you live with that? Why should Tama County taxpayers have to live with that? It's not right. Tama County's ordinance does not even mention a single word about limiting shadow flicker. Tama County doesn't even use the term shadow flicker in their ordinance. Yet shadow flicker can negatively affect those who have to suffer through its consequences. It's not a rare occurrence, as developers and wind project operators may claim. It can be a devastating part of wind projects at certain times of the year.
Because of the minimal outdated wind ordinance, you three hastily and unanimously reapproved May sixteenth without even holding a series of public meetings or required public notice of hearings, you're sentencing Tama County residents to live with that devastating effects of wind turbine shadow flicker for at least the next thirty years. How can you do that? Is it because you didn't take the time or because you didn't care to research modern wind ordinances and compare those to Tama County's skeletal requirements? Or is it because you care more about inflated promises of big money for the few who claim they may benefit financially from commercial wind turbines than the health and safety of everyone in the county? As elected public officials, you have a duty and an obligation to do your job to represent everyone in Tama County. That duty and obligation comes with work. You need to start doing your homework, just as the volunteer members of our coalition have been doing. Our members have provided you with specific, well-researched examples of why Tama County's wind regulation and ordinance needs change. We have presented you with the best practices for Tama County's adoption to better protect the people, livestock, wildlife, and the rich farmland of Tama County. And it's about time you start listening to our coalition's concerns. We are not going away, and we will not be silenced. Your lack of answering even simple questions only makes us larger, stronger, and more committed. We will continue to do everything legally possible to hold you accountable for protecting public health, public safety, and prime farmland. It's time for you to quit hiding behind no comment, or worse yet, not even say that. Does the cat have your tongue, or is it Carlton Salmon's? Is your attorney Carlton Salmon so concerned with your lack of ability that he simply tells you to say no comment? Or he'd say nothing for fear of what you might say? And by saying nothing, how can you possibly even think you are earning your paycheck as supervisors? Your failure to update Tama County's minimal outdated commercial wind energy ordinance will likely create more of a liability to the county than an asset, as you may believe.
No one is asking you to drive property values and population down by turning Tama County into an industrial wind turbine junkyard. No one is asking you to further limit the ability for the people of Tama County to send and receive cellphone calls. No one is asking you to limit the ability to get signals to lifeline devices reliably or for first responders and law enforcement officials to communicate quickly and consistently in an emergency. Tama County already has issues with the reliability of communication signals. Have you driven through the Vienna Wind Project ever without getting a drop home call? Have you ever traveled from Toledo on the DuPonti Road toward Clutier and tried to make cellphone call without it dropping multiple times? Imagine how much more difficult it will be to get communication signals through consistently and reliably in the county if it approves any more industrial wind turbines or if the county does not verify upfront and demand written proof and objective third-party data. Independent of wind developers, the Tama County communication signals will not be interrupted. It is not acceptable to just trust the industrial wind developers or their investors. It is not acceptable to listen to developers who say their turbines won't emit more than thirty hours of shadow flicker a year. Who in Tama County is going to measure and enforce that? The lack of any language about shadow flicker needs to be in Tama County's commercial wind energy conversion system ordinance. Thirty hours of shadow flicker each year, as a developer says they may try to follow, is unacceptable. If any commercial wind turbines are approved by Tama County, the county's industrial wind ordinance needs to be amended so that there is no shadow flicker emitted by wind turbines at the property line. You as supervisors need to take into account the public health and public safety of everyone in the county, not just those who stand to potentially gain financially from industrial wind turbines if any further projects are approved. Here's another action item. We are asking you to amend the Tama County current industrial wind ordinance to require that no amount of shadow flicker occurs at the property line at any time. That is what is safest for public health and public safety. And county officials need to verify the data upfront to ensure that that will not happen before any turbines are approved for construction or built.
Developers make all kinds of claims about the economic impact of wind projects. Those claims are just that, claims, estimates, talk of big money that may never materialize and that may never take into account the many negative side effects of industrial wind projects. They do not account for the decrease in property values, especially for acreages that plummet in price once wind turbines encroach on an area. They do not account for the declining school enrollment once people who may want to move out of the cities to enjoy quiet country life no longer move to an area littered with the disturbing flashing red lights of wind turbines at night and the noise of them day and night. They do not account for the death loss to wildlife from wind turbines, from bats whose lungs explode, and bald eagles who lose their lives, or bees who become disoriented and can no longer find their way back to hives or to pollinate crops. They do not account for the loss of freedom farmers who sign easements give up when they can no longer make their own decisions about how and what and where they build on their own land without being beholden to those who sign contracts with that will live on long past their own lives. They don't account for the soil erosion and compaction and drainage issues that can be irreversible once wind projects are allowed on prime farmland. They don't account for the declining population of the county, leaving fewer taxpayers holding the bag for all the destruction to the roads destroyed by heavy equipment during turbine construction. They don't account for the loss of quality of life in living in rural areas and small towns like Tama County that are never the same after wind projects forever change an area. Ask the people of Gladbrook. Ask the people of the Gladbrook School District about all those promises of big money coming in off industrial wind projects. If all those claims were so great, we'd be looking at a new school in Gladbrook, right? Instead, they had to close it and merge with Reinbeck. As you, as a supervisor, Larry, took what little money did come in from the Vienna Wind Project in Gladbrook and turned it into a TIF project so the county could cash in rather than the Gladbrook School District. You claimed you created a TIF project to buy gravel. Why didn't you hold the developers accountable for restoring the roads damaged as a result of the turbine project, accountable for restoring them? Larry, you often talk about Tama County's debt load. You've been a supervisor for twenty-seven years. Could you explain, could you please explain how Tama County got so far into debt under your watch as supervisor? The public would like to know. So please explain. Talking about the county's debt should be something you can answer, so please help us understand. You want to talk about that, Larry?
While we're talking about debt, last week we talked about what it was going to cost to hire Carlton Salmon's from Des Moines, and they were going to look into what the hourly rate was going to be for that attorney from the Heartland Insurance Risk Pool. How much will taxpayers be paying additionally to this Pope County attorney because you choose to listen to him and not the Tama County attorney? Did anybody find out about that issue?
I didn't. I think Tammy was checking into that.
Is she going to come today?
I think she is coming today.
I saw her walk this way across the street.
Yeah, I think she is coming today.
She was here.
Well, maybe she comes back in, and she'll be able to answer that question. And Larry, would you be able to answer how much debt? You talked about Tama County's debt load. How much debt does the county have now? Do you know where Tama County is on debt load now?
Information, but I don't have it.
It's time you start listening to and answering questions for the people you work for, the taxpayers of Tama County. It's time for you three to realize that you work for us. And we, as taxpayers, are giving you a failing grade for your failure to update the wind energy conversion system ordinance or to enforce developers' compliance to conditional use permits to better protect public safety. You've also failed to be open and transparent in answering questions from the public, including the more than eleven hundred members of the coalition we represent. We'll continue to ask the questions taxpayers want and deserve to know and to hold you accountable for better protecting public safety, public health, and prime farmland. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I have a comment I need. Good. I'm Nancy Youska. My husband is, and he far north wants to retire. This day that follows our Fourth of July celebrations of Independence Day, let's not forget that our Constitution conforms to the principles in the Declaration of Independence in which, and I quote, "Governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." From the consent of the governed. Now, I think we all know what tyranny looks like. It is unjust governmental power when the powers making the rules could not care less about the desires of the governed. I am done with victim mentality. I'm proud... I am proud to stand among the brave patriotic Tama County citizens in this effort to rein in the tyranny and get us back to government from the consent of the governed. Thank you very much.
We had had a question earlier. You were going to look in the hourly rate of Carlton Sammons for issues over and above the insurance.
Um, no, I forgot to ask him. Sorry. I haven't talked to him, so I'll ask him.
All right, we'll follow up.
I wouldn't mind making a comment. I know you guys are everybody. Your hands are tied. Quite frankly, you are being bullied and not by this group here. The truth is, you got bullied long before we came in and stood up to you about actually not standing up to you, but tried to get something done about what this county is going through. You love your county. You do. I know you do. And I quite frankly feel bad for you and the rest of you by the way you are being bullied. It's terrible. You're being bullied by people that truly don't care about justice or the people. There are people out there under contract that can no longer tell you how they feel. They say it, but they can't tell you. And if they get caught saying it, God forbid. There are people out there that are being told, "Sign up with us. We're going to give you this much money." What they don't get told is their name is no longer on their land. They are so proud of their land, and it's taken away in name. What do you have left? What do you have left? Todd Appel, is he even allowed to do anything? My understanding, looking through the laws and books, is he has to go through you guys. That's a shame that that man cannot do anything because your hands are tied. This is tyranny. She spoke truth. When you talk about, when Bob talks about us coming across as bullies, no, we're not bullies. We are people that are tired of trying to do what is right, of trying to protect those around us, of trying to protect those without a voice. We're tired of it, and we're aggravated. And I personally am aggravated for you guys. There's other aggravations that I will not speak to right now, but this group is not bullies. This group are rock-solid people that are fighting for others. There are, if you want to go by the Facebook group, there are people that come in, and if you look through the list, there are people that don't belong, more or less, on that Facebook group for the right reasons. I've turned things into the administrators when I've seen things that should not be on there. We all have. We're not a group of bullies. We're a group of people that believe in fighting for ourselves and those who cannot speak. And when you talk about misinformation, don't dig very far. You scratch that surface over there across the road. You can find it. There's so much misinformation, so much misleading, so many lies. I feel for you guys, I really do. I feel bad that you have had your hands tied, that you are being bullied, that this group is trying everything they can to help you along so that you have a voice back. I'm done.
Thank you for coming. We've got a couple more minutes, guys, if anybody wants to say anything else.
Well, I think it's not just about you guys. I think it's the land that we own that's been passed from generations to generations. My dad died. I'm a landowner, and these guys asked me twice. I said, "No twice," because the love of the land is special. I mean, I have a farm that my dad gave me. That everybody couldn't have this. What an honor. I mean, I'm a caretaker. I'm a steward of land, and I'll do the best I can. I'll have my trees. I have a wildlife back. I like to see hunters hunt again. I like to see ducks come back, pheasants. You know, each land is a special part of everybody's in this room, is part of their lives. Can't take that away from you. A company who does not own land don't know how the feelings we feel. We have close ties, very close ties, to the property that we own. We want the best for it. We'll fight for it. I'll stand my ground. It's a... I'm honored. I'm honored to be a landowner. I'm blessed, and I will stay blessed. I think I speak for everybody, hopefully. I think we all feel the same way about our own problems and how we feel about it. We'll do the best we know for it, and we'll stand for it. It can't speak for itself, so we're speaking for it. That's how I feel. And if it's wrong, as a supervisor, you think that's wrong? Or being a girl? I'm sorry. That's how I feel. That's how I've been brought up, is to take care of the land. That's it. I'm sorry. It's my land. I love it.
We have a float. It's been in the Corn Cartel. It's been in the Dyser Fourth of July Parade. As a coalition member, we went through the parade. We were welcomed by "Keep Fighting," "Protect Our Rights." "We're Behind You Guys." You will see this float in every town celebration. You will see us in every town celebration. We had a tremendous fundraising event by selling these shirts. One of our hottest items was this one. You guys have created this. You strengthen us. We will not go away. Larry, some of our largest supporters come from the City of Prayer, where you live. The numbers keep growing from prayer. Your neighbors, the folks you proudly go to church with, the same folks you buy groceries at the same grocery store. Some of our largest group of supporters come from the City of Prayer, and each one of your districts are well-represented in our coalition. It's time to listen, guys. It's long overdue.
Okay, John, thank you. It's nine thirty. Oh, meeting order. Is there a motion for last minute? I'll make that one. Thank you, Mr. Second. All the favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. What's the names? Motion, carry.
We have a few utility permits. A lot of county engineers.
Here is up in the Dyser area. We're going to cross the county road. It's going to do that. The state, this permits to work in the state also when the contractor's loan on the state goes and they cross the county road. The state requires them to have a sign off on that. And that's why they're not going to be able to get a county, the county's other hand on the signature. And I do.
How do you come on this project?
I haven't seen any. But I'll follow this.
This one's for Windstream. Windstream is doing some work over, it's not a V-18, it's back to mile from the San Francisco. And some of it's actually within the county right away. And some, like, same thing, the state is having. They're crossing, the state's right away, and they're crossing our right away. Therefore, we need to sign off on it. While they didn't approve the signature papers, that's happened. It's the same thing, it's like someone approved it. This one sets up here. They're doing some work over by the, uh, Windstream is also doing some work on Highway Thirty over by the Masquatches. And for that reason, we have to sign off the portion of Masquatches. It's going into the, uh, the gas station. They've also included a utility permit. They're asking us to give a utility permit going down into the, to the Masquatches. We don't have authority for that. I don't have a reply with that. County Board is doing a, just a boring underneath the gravel road up in the west. It's on our avenue, west of Cluteer, okay? And then the last item that I have for you guys is, I'm going to hand you guys a letter. It's to set up a hearing for a Class C road. And I think I sent something to the Augers office to lower. And what the letter says is, I'm going to ask you to set up a Class C hearing. This is down by, I said, the Slough House Road. Not by the Abbey Road. So looking to set that up for, if you guys approve that next week, we'll advertise it and we'll have a hearing on August first, I think is what it says.
Okay. Sounds good.
I wrote down a few things, none of those very... We are, I told you about T-47 is going to be September when that actually kicks in, the actual period. We're finishing up grade restoration on N Avenue. We're starting on H Avenue, South of Ninety-Six. And we're doing work up there that's starting today. Our goal is to go down to Two-Tenth. We'll see how things go. The rain can change that. They're still working on the bridge. The contractor is down in Richland Thirty-Three. That's down by Groffler's on P Avenue, South East Sixty-four. Otherwise, we're lagging roads like normal. I wrote all that stuff down here. I didn't have anything else for you guys, unless you had something for me.
I don't have anything else.
The only thing I have is that C Avenue up by the Fairmount, that stop sign.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you. That was placed before my time. I contacted, tried to contact a couple of people. I don't have contacts with Kim Wilson anymore. I don't know if it would happen if Kim was on the board or not.
Responding a lot well anyway.
Well, the only thing I can think of is, I went to school in Gladbrook, and coming from town out to C Avenue, that stop sign had been there. And I feel the reason for that is the fact that, at the time, that coming from town out to C Avenue, you either came straight to a tee or you could go around a curve. The curve was a yield sign, not a stop sign. When you came to this tee, it was a stop sign, so they stopped both ways. So now it's just the tee with a stop sign, and we no longer have a yield sign there.
I spoke with Mike Winzian about it. Mike is a former county supervisor. It was after his time that it happened. His best guess is that it had to do with grain coming into town that they put a stop sign for the north direction traffic. So if you're coming up that hill from the north, heading south, as you come up that, if there was no traffic that was southbound, you were going to stop, and they just made it that that, that direction had the right of way. Going up the hill could pull in the, that was his best guess. The southbound traffic could sound just fine. I don't know if grain goes in Gladbrook like it used to right now.
No, I don't know whether it hurt in Gladbrook.
I don't know if there's any other facilities that goes into. I think that's what it's related to. That's the best explanation I can come up with. And it could be the, the swingery, you're talking about also. But regardless, it could be changed. We're talking about removing a stop sign. That's a little bit more problematic to make sure that people who are southbound know that there's no longer a stop sign coming from, from the south. But it can be done, yes. I can prepare a resolution for you guys to consider to do that. We'll have to figure out how we're going to sign it to make sure people do understand it. If that's the case.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anything else?
None from me. Thank you, Larry.
Larry? Thank you.
I always ask for questions.
I remember the accessory caller, there's one on there that had a question on that list. Yeah. On that quick. Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask. I would have been super nice. I got one question, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, carry. Approve the favorite county DOT policy.
Okay, so.
My policy or your policy?
He's got a call, the DOT policy.
The DOT policy.
That's fine.
Oh, pardon the translation.
Uh-huh. It's the DOT policy. Yeah, that's what this is. Actually, what it is, you approved it before, but I just had it revised through CJ Cooper. So, um, the policy is for all of our CDL drivers. And so they changed the language to accommodate the federal motor carriers requirement now for them to be on that site. It also added some additional drugs that you're not allowed to use if you are a CDL driver. And so every couple of years, I updated. This is the new update. I just need you to...
Yeah, I just wanted to, it would have been super nice. I got one question on the add-on. And have you been there at home? Just under your chair, second one down, this, your own, Melissa? Uh, have numbers, nine oh seven mil? They, they have so much loyalty, they're moving back. What's that? Haven't even lived here a full year.
Yeah, I've lived.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Okay, Mary?
Yep.
You know, we got a few minutes here, you want to move on, Mary? Prove the double D liquor license. May you go here?
Yeah, that's usually just, uh, just where they're at, it's just for a few days, so.
Yeah. I'll second.
All the way to the north, you say aye?
Aye.
Rose, nay? Carrie? Prove favorite acting DOT policy. What is that?
Okay, so.
So, I, where's the call?
My policy or your policy?
He's got a call, the DOT policy, DOT policy.
That's fine.
Oh, pardon the translation?
Uh-huh, it's the DOT policy. Yeah, that's what this is. Actually, what it is, you approved it before, but I just had it revised through CJ Cooper. Um, so, um, the policy is for all of our CDL drivers. And, so they changed the language to accommodate the, uh, federal motor carriers requirement now, for them to be on that site. It also added some additional drugs that you're not allowed to use if you are a CDL driver. Um, and so every couple of years, I updated, this is the new update. I just need you to approve it. And then, uh, we will do additional training, and everybody will sign off on it this fall.
So we don't need to take any action on it today?
Uh, you just need to approve it, or you can wait till next week, that's up to you guys. Um, but this is what was, it's the same thing we've had, we just added new drug language and federal motor carrier language.
We're to Edge Spring.
Okay.
I keep all of that to, you don't have to.
Perfectly fine, because I'm not doing training till later.
Okay, approve Homestead military presumptions. This one's good to me, I made one correction, and it'll be handled in the Cesar's office, so.
I looked at it, I'll find it.
I looked at it as well, I'll find it. You got anything else?
I don't think I got that. Was that, uh?
So one to add all the list of, you and me, I thought you looked at.
Oh. Oh, okay.
You got, I'll take that. You're going to go through it all on my head, unless you know somebody else.
Am I in the case?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
You're in with that?
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the Homestead military.
Thank you. Carrie, you're second. Carrie? All the way to the side, aye?
Aye.
Rose, nay? Motion, Carrie? Request for use in courthouse lawn in Green Bay.
I think I gave you guys a copy of it.
You did, yes. We got one in eight years. Is that Lori Byer?
Yeah, Lori Byer.
What is that, or is it?
So, uh, it's the, we, we need guilds at every year, well, they have it for a couple of years, they have a, a theater camp, and Camp Creamery comes in for a week, they recruit kids, and they practice the play, and then they need a place to eat lunch, so they usually, in the past, have just come over here, ate on the courthouse lawn, and got a little energy runoff, and then they always make sure they bring garbage bags with them, I think, so they're just asking if they can use the courthouse lawn.
I think you guys got any? I got a group.
Yep. I'll second that.
The military, say aye?
Aye.
Rose, nay? We've got a couple more minutes here, how about the department appropriation?
Okay. Well, this is what I gave you, this big table. So this is something you guys do every year, we need to do it before we pay claims, um, this, this week. Um, at budget time, you have budget meetings with each of your departments, this is the amount you approved for each department. Uh, the first column says their budget in amount, the second column is the appropriation, which is you giving them permission to spend that much money. Um, the total is thirty million, eight ninety-eight, zero eight four. So I'm just asking for you to approve that. Um, it, uh, just needs to be a motion and a second.
Hey, is there a motion to approve the department appropriations?
I'll make that motion.
That's definitely, just like, all the way to the side.
Aye.
Aye. Rose, nay? Okay, Carrie? All right. Hi, Catherine?
Good morning.
Catherine, you feeling like you're almost up here?
Good morning, guys, this morning. Excellent, thank you for your time this morning. It's been a little while since you did an update. Thought like we needed to go through a few, just a few things. You ready? Okay, so this is just about the last sixty days or so, updates on where things are progressing to, um, we're starting to work through the redesign on our website. We're starting to work through a total teardown and redesign on the travel website for Tama County. As part of that travel project, we're also going to be shooting some drone footage throughout the county, in every individual community, and a few of our attractions. We'll bring those drone subs back when Otter Creek looks beautiful, because we really do want that footage as well. Um, that footage will be a part of our website redesign, it will also be shared with every community. There's no reason that we, um, find the funds to be able to do that kind of a project, and not just zip drive it to every community. So anyone that's working on their community website, they'll have all those skill shots, anything they need from what we shot in their community. Um, same thing for the travel website, we'll use a lot of that footage for that. So as part of that, we're redoing this Tama County travel guidebook. Um, it, it's a year off of its schedule. With the pandemic, it seemed a little odd to go out and solicit ad sales from businesses that were, some of them closed at the time. So this project got put off an extra year. We had enough guidebooks because of the slowdown of requests to get us through. Um, but this guidebook is also really getting a major revamp. Um, there are a lot of things in this guidebook that I'm not sure are exactly as, as good of a representation of our county as it could be. There's a couple of things in here that are a little misleading. Um, go find the Lincoln marker from this guidebook out on the gravel road just north of town, and you'll discover that it's not five foot high like it looks in our guidebook, it's actually seven inches high. So some of those things, we have to be more careful, that we don't bring a visitor to our county with an expectation, and then completely let them down. So like, the cover in the guidebook, you guys, there's no waterfall in Tama County. So just things like this, we have to be more selective, we have to slow this project down a little, and really take time to build great information in the guidebook, and to shoot pictures that actually look like our county, that represent us. So this project is taking a lot of time, but I'm pretty sure when we get the next guidebook back, in about January is the timeline for that project. We have a tourism committee from throughout the entire county that is working on this project. Ad sales, content, you name it. And so we're hoping by January first, that'll roll them out to all of the Iowa Welcome Centers. We print almost eight thousand of these, and they go to every licensed welcome center through Iowa Tourism in the entire state. So we get a lot of requests, probably just in the last six weeks, we've seen twelve or fifteen come in, either directly through the guidebook, or through our central Iowa Tourism connection. And those are people that specifically want something that's been shown in the guidebook. So if we can do a better job, I think we can bring even more visitors to town. Um, we also rolled out the Phase One of our American Rescue Plan, and so that Phase One specifically targeted the licensed daycare centers in our county, and also our very small town grocery stores. Um, there's been a lot of discussion this last few months, at a lot of different meetings, about the importance of not creating what they call a food desert. And so when you have a community that does not have availability to groceries or fresh produce, it, it greatly affects the, the poorest community members. It greatly affects the community members that have the least ability to get out and about. And so those small town grocery stores are vital in some of our communities. And so those grocery stores were a part of that program, they all received small grants as part of that program. And then they'll be coming back and making application in our Phase Two piece of that as well. So Phase Two, we're hoping to roll that out in about, um, maybe sixty days, the first of September. And that, we will actually have an application process for all of the businesses throughout the county. You'll fill out that application, and then we'll make awards based on how much money that county, that County American Rescue Funds Committee, um, awards to this particular piece of our request. So that committee has done a really good job, like siphoning through requests and figuring out how we make sure we hit every guideline of their program, to make sure we're fulfilling the federal government guidelines of what they want us to do with the money. So I'm really excited about that Phase Two. That, that's money that I get a call almost every other day from someone that is looking for a grant for something. And there, that's a myth, there are very few grants out there. Um, there are a lot of small interest loan monies, things like that, but as far as grants for our business community, that's kind of few and far between. And so it's going to be nice to be able to have a program, even if it's just for about a year, that it will only go to Tama County, it will directly go right back into our economy, dollar for dollar. So that is super exciting, that we're going to use those funds in that kind of a manner. Um, we've also been doing some walking tours with Iowa Economic Development Authority. We've had, um, their, their project manager, Jim Thompson, then also a part of his team, Jim Engvall, and then also my Alliance Energy representative, Jim Bowman. So I've done a number of walking tours with all of the gyms in Tama and Toledo. So if that's an easy one, you don't forget anyone's name. Um, but those guys are super excited about where we might be headed in downtown Toledo, we're filling those spots quite nicely. That downtown is really filling up, we've seen a couple new specialty shops, and we've done a lot of talking with, um, the local business owners on the street, Marty's our big one there, obviously, and about what we could do to redo some of that facade, some of that hang, that overhang, that shingle, you know, that was going to be a requirement from Des Moines, they were going to say, we, we want you to tear that off, and, um, a couple of people on the committee thought, there's no way Marty will touch those, and Marty said, wear jeans to work tomorrow, we'll tear them all off. So I, that, that, what we thought might be a hiccup, absolutely will not be in that downtown. The pocket park is coming along really nicely. Um, so then our walking tour in downtown Toledo, that Toledo Community Development Group is working on the Horbach Building. They've acquired that building, and I've gone through cost estimates. We worked with Marty at Region Six to apply for American Rescue Funds, housing funds that came through Economic Development Authority. Um, they received a three hundred thousand dollar award from those, those folks. Then Debbie Durnum allowed me to work with the Emergency Catalyst folks at Des Moines, again, that's Jim Thompson's group. Um, he worked with us, and we have to get the award letter yet, but we've been awarded a hundred thousand dollars in extra emergency funds because of some of the deratio damage. And so that project will be moving ahead in the next few months. They will be doing a complete revamp on the second story of the building, that'll become two one-bedroom apartments. It'll fix all the tuck point on the outside, um, shore up the roof, and then also just kind of clean up the main floor. And then we're looking for some additional funds through maybe say SBA for a business that we're trying to recruit into that main floor. So I, I have a really lofty idea of who we try to get into that building, but right now, that, that business owner's just kind of talking with us and trying to mull over how much we're throwing at them. So in the last, like, eight weeks, I've, I've had sessions with Iowa Business Growth Center, USDA Rule Development, Bill's a really good resource, and they put on a lot of conferences that are online, which is terrific, because you can jump on, get a session in one hour, and you haven't had to drive to Des Moines, or drive to Sioux City, or goodness knows where. I, I, I know a lot of people hate all this that's come out of the pandemic, as far as our virtual calls, but a busy person loves them. You get on, you get things done. Our Region Six Housing Trust Group, we are having lively discussions every time we're all together. And this last time, the Trust Fund Group, at the end, we said, okay, when are we meeting again? Are we going to do it in person? And every one of us said, this is productive, and none of us have to drive an hour to the meeting, an hour back to our counties. This is great, as long as we're getting things done, and we can all communicate, and there's seamless communication, let's keep getting it done like this. And then projects that involve Marty, he comes out and works with us one-on-one. Um, I've been doing some stuff with the Institute for Decision Making up at UNI, I've connected a couple businesses to the SBA Center, they're going to be getting some resources, um, in the form of like planning assistance, and then also some research into, um, market research for one business. Um, continue to stay on my Highway Thirty Coalition call to stay up to date with what the DOT is doing, and when they're going to get us completely opened up, and the DNR, I've been there a number of times in the last three months, because they've been a valuable resource. Mel goes back to my Benton County days, twenty-five years of working with him, and with all of the questions that have involved the juvenile home this last sixty, ninety days, Mel has been a valuable resource on some of the asbestos questions I've had to figure out. So I went to the SMART Conference, um, that was put on by Alliance Energy in Correville, that was really good, I made a couple of connections on projects that ended up turning into a downtown tour, and money that came through another, um, pot of funds. Let's see. Um, also a DOT session at the Cedar Rapids Library that was really good, it talked about all the new funding pieces that are going to roll out in this next year. Um, the last couple of months, I've been attending online, again, discussions and training through Alliance Energy, they have what's called the LOWIS program. So this LOWIS program is where we, as county, um, economic development people, track down our building information, our land information, we input it into the LOWIS system. So we have to be trained in order to be allowed into the system. Once we're allowed into the system, we can input our information, and then anyone that's looking for a potential building or a site, especially through Economic Development Authority, we pop up right away on those, on those inquiries. So it helps bring, helps funnel those to us just a little bit easier, and it's a great way for us to shore up, um, what our inventory looks like in the county, so it's not a bad exercise for us locally either. So let's talk, let's talk juvenile home, we're getting there. The juvenile home is just a monster, I never even really dreamed was going to continue to cause challenge by challenge by challenge, but nothing easy is fun. So, um, we're continuing to fight our way through it. There's just so many steps, working with the state and trying to create a cohesive plan between what is now a city, a school district, and the state. And at the state level, we're not just dealing with Department of Administrative Services, we're dealing with Department of Human Services, because they technically hold title to the building. They hold title to the property. So there's really no mechanism in our legislative system in Iowa to have a building transferred by DHS. So it's something in this next legislative session that they're going to have to fix. But in the meantime, we're kind of a project that the states, learning as they go, and they have multiple state facilities, like the juvenile home, sitting empty with just as much potential as ours, that they need to find solutions. So the fact that we've found a solution, they're really watching how we're putting things together. I, I am communicating with adamant Department of Administrative Services on more than a weekly basis, more than a weekly basis, because we cannot drop the ball at this point, we have the process going, the bond, the vote, the vote passed here in Tama, Toledo, so we can't drop the ball. But asbestos is difficult. I mean, we, we finished the Phase One study, we moved on to the hazardous mitigation study, we are nearly done with the hazardous mitigation study, the final samples will be in this Friday. There were nearly eight hundred samples taken on property. So it is a, a slow, complex process, which it should be, we're going to put kids in there. But as soon as we have that final study at the end of this week, next Monday, that whole school board group, the state, everyone's coming in to meet with us again, meaning Kendall and I, because he's my city, I, I would have slept underwater without Kendall on this one. Um, they're going to come meet with us again, and we'll formulate the plan of how the hazardous mitigation is going to happen from here. So TerraCon's, who we've worked with all along, they did all the work for the state originally. Um, there's been a lot of questions about whether or not we can do all of these tasks while the state still owns the facility, but the state awarded us a grant to be able to do these steps. So everyone's on the same page, it's just taking forever. And my goal is to have this project off my desk by the end of the year. It's gonna happen, because it's consuming a lot of time, and it's so important, but man, it's been really hard to get everyone to collaborate and stay on the same page, and watch the cost, and be responsible. So I, I want the state to know, when we get done with this project, that both the city of Toledo and our office was fiscally responsible, incredibly helpful, because that only parlay's into projects in the future where we need to collaborate with them again. So I'm trying to just stay really, keep my eye on the ball, that this, it's a long-term project, and, and that's what it is, it is what it is. So, um, let's jump to maybe, I still have like seventy-two more things you guys know.
Yeah, we got a lot to live in this, right?
Okay, so, uh, let's jump to my last thing, housing assessment. I'm getting requests for housing information on our county on a constant and continuous basis. Today, a new program rolled out from the state, and so we'll start to be able to know the guidelines, and how we can apply to that program. We can get ten thousand dollars per county, we can get ten thousand per community. Tama, Toledo for sure have to do this, and they are going to. So I would like to see us parlay that into a full county-wide study as well. In the next two or three weeks, I will be back on the agenda again, and we will only talk housing needs assessment. Okay?
Thanks, Catherine.
I left off like seventy-two things, you guys. And it's great, it, it is so nice to see something happening in every corner of this county. Love this job.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, guys, have a great. Okay, thanks, guys, have a great day. That's okay, I'll make you back after, I'll see you later.
I'll see you, babe.
All righty. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's name? Motion carry. There you go. Okay. Discussion of possible action, co-session with council referring to the Fairlands Act being issued. I suggest we go into co-session, so, I guess that's cute.